Gentlemen, today is the 18th December at 7:30 and this is a regular meeting of the Greensburg Area or Greensburg Plan Commission. Call to orders, please stand and I want you to say the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Nancy, would you please, for call roll?
Roy.
Yes.
Kevin.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
John.
Here.
Bruce.
Having a full board, we are, next item of business would be the approval of minutes from our November meeting. Received the minutes in the mail and the copy was handed to you or electronically a copy is handed to you tonight. Are there corrections or additions? Hearing none, I would accept the motion for approval. Seconds, John, thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well posed. Thank you. We have just a couple of items on the agenda. Oh, did Nancy?
Yes.
Did you get word what happened?
Yes.
And which is, it did start at seven.
I know, I was thinking seven thirty.
Yeah, okay. But, did you know what the outcome is?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. We have our ongoing work here with regard to sign ordinance and with that, we're going to bring it, I think, to a conclusion tonight, or conclusion at least in one part. Here's my plan for this. As we agreed, several of us gathered a couple different times prior to this meeting in order to try and finalize the draft. And so, we do have a final draft before you, except for the chart that we had agreed to earlier, which no substantial changes have been made. That chart will be added to this draft with any changes we make tonight, for final approval in January by us. And that's the plan, that once we go through this tonight, we're going to walk through, show you what changes we've made, where we are. We're asking you then, between now and the next meeting, to look at it carefully, so that you're prepared to, in January, and comfortable enough to sign off on it or no. Okay? So, with that, I'm going to ask Chris to walk through this, just page by page, to highlight, or point out, I should say, the significant changes that were made, so that you can know where they're at and what was done. I think we have been true to what we all talked about and agreed to at previous meetings. And if we're not, if you catch that, we'll let pointed out, so we can correct it. We have a couple of spots where we have a couple of questions that we want to bring to your attention, or some feedback before we finalize it. And at this point in time, what I'd like to do, Sean, is I'm going to ask Chris to walk through it all the way through, and then, once, and the board members to ask questions and clarify things, once we've done that, then, Sean, I will open the floor for public comment, for you to make any further clarifications or questions, whatever. And then, I think we'll be to the point of closure of this at this point in time. Okay? Okay, Mr. Chris, please.
Okay. Just so you know, we, I made all of the changes that were discussed in the September and October meetings prior to our meeting, so those are implemented here as best they can be, or to the best of my recollection of notes. Changed the, in the purpose and intent section, we changed that to read will not create potential hazards, instead of will, which is consistent with what we meant it to say. The, and this is not in your, the version that I sent you, but we discussed it earlier this evening, actually, moving the, striking the word architectural in the definition of blade, and then moving the entire blade definition to be undersigned, because a blade sign is a type of sign. In the definition on page one to the word, or definition of copy, we added the phrase that form an advertisement message. In copy area, Sean is going to provide us with a infographic or an illustration that we can insert here to show how that calculation is made. In face, the definition of face, we struck the word structural elements.
You'd have to look at your old copy to see where we've made changes. What we're trying to do is just point out what we've done, as you can take notes on this, then if you wish to go back and compare, you can. Do you have a question, Kevin?
Okay.
All right.
And also, if any of the board, or the Plan Commission members would like, I did keep a version of this with track changes on it, so I can email that to all of you that show exactly where things are struck.
Then, did you have the, do you have a latest one? It's, the language should be the same, once you, you just didn't get the expanded version, you got the actual text.
Perfect.
You're okay. It should have, the section should be the same and the language should be the same, it just won't look like that.
Gotcha.
Okay? Glenn, please.
Okay. There were no changes to page three. On page four, under the definition of sign.
And page four, so we're ready up to the s's for you, Blake, because you're going to be a little bit off of page maybe.
Under the definition of sign, we struck the words, we struck the words indication, description, and illustration, and changed that to add the terms mark, figure, symbol, letter, name, so that now reads any mark, figure, symbol, letter, name, or device illuminated or non-illuminated, etc. And, some of this is clear as far as rationale, I think. That may be a little less clear, but it was more in the character of the definition from the dictionary and so forth. And more keeping, I think, Sean was saying, with regard to industry kinds of standards. On page five, under the different types of signs, in the word, under the definition of freestanding, we struck the word seat ground sign, and added the phrase, a sign that is not attached to a building, which is a definition for a freestanding sign, which we found in various ordinances in the dictionary, kind of combination there. There's no changes to page six. There's no changes to page seven. We did want to highlight to council, section three, sign standards. On page eight now, of the copy that's got the shaded notation area on it.
And do you recall why exactly we wanted to bring this to their attention?
Let me come back and reread this a minute. Did we strike something there? We didn't, I don't think we struck anything, I think we may have.
No, we did, we had, is there that we signed?
We did, yes, we struck the, we struck the phrase, this sign standard section applies as more fully described below to the following zoning districts. And that was simply, we struck it because that sentence didn't really flow, because we were no longer dealing with the specific districts, and we had added section numbers to each one of them, so we felt like it was not, with some of the reordering that we did, that sentence just no longer made sense in the sign standard.
The standards stay the same, it's just the, making it read a little bit clearer with regard to the reason.
But we did want you to be aware that we did strike that.
And again, we, we used the, we capitalized the word, well, it was, sorry, capitalized, but we kept it. Yeah. I think under state permit two, we initially had a capital S there for the word sign, and we made it small s, so it doesn't refer to necessarily the signs as described, the capital S refers to a specific definition in this ordinance, and we just said all signs. And I'm going to ask Sean to, you did do a follow-up on that, Sean, but you want to explain that now, please?
Sure.
The, Chris, I believe it's Bowling, from Seymour, he's a great guy, from the state of Indiana, is really nice to talk to. Give us a lot of information, basically stated, which a lot of us already know, but it's an on-premise sign, you own the ground you're advertising for, or something that you're selling on that ground is one thing, versus if it's off-premise sign, that if you're advertising, you have approval to put up an off-premise sign, you have approval from the state or, and the city or county, and then you will need this state permit, otherwise you do not need a state permit, even if you're next to a major interstate.
And so, what, what we're doing here is just alert, we're not saying they have to go get a state permit, but we're just cautioning them that if somebody wants to put up a sign, they should check that out, whether they need to or not, that's really what it's there for.
And then, also, just for consistency and application, we also changed the, from the, we stopped using the defined term signs on Heisman Holder approval and off-premise property owner approval, so we went to a small s on each of those, small s signs opposed to a defined term. Page eight. On page nine, we added a separate bullet point for addresses, which I believe was just a typo from before. On page 10, we made some format changes to the word, to the political campaign sign. And then, we also added the phrase, that political, that political campaign sign must be removed within two weeks of the election for which the sign is supported, so that the election signs have to be taken down after a state.
Please give us some authority to ask that to be done, or remind people that it be done.
I did have a note that you wanted to raise, the issue of an indoor commercial message sign to their, to the board's attention, to the plan's attention.
I'm trying to remember exactly why.
I think it had to do with the conversation we were having about things that are inside versus being able to see them now.
Yeah, we had talked about that a good deal, at one meeting, and I just, I think we, it's here under a, you know, exemptions, I just want to point out, that's where, that's where it is, and if we've got any concerns about that, you need to look through that again. Please bring it back for, unless you've got comments now, bring it back for clarification and finalization the next meeting.
Moving on to page 11, we, under prohibited content, we changed the word emulate to imitate, so that it would read, signs that imitate emergency service vehicles or common traffic signs or signals shall now be permitted, as opposed to signs that emulate.
Rational, that was, just seems to be a more common term for people to understand. And imitate is kind of model it, and emulate is try to pattern.
Under, on page 12, we added a section, title heading, called ingress and egress. So, basically, it was a format change to clarify different types of sign prohibitions, mainly, we didn't actually change the specific language that was in here, just added a phrase ingress and egress, and said that signs shall not be permitted in manners that substantially block certain instances of access, such as we're not necessarily limited to the following. And then, a separate bullet point for fire safety, which is, signs shall not be permitted on a firescape or in a manner that substantially blocks views from the right-of-way to a fire door, or obstruct circulation is the second bullet point, that's obstructing interfering with internal or external safe movement of vehicular or pedestrian traffic shall not be permitted.
Yeah, we just basically tried to clarify, it was, before it was locations, and then we said firescape, and it was ported differently in the earlier version, and we thought this made it clearer, easier to follow in terms of the kinds of, what we're trying to describe. Plagued this with wordsmithing somewhat, but felt it was necessary in terms of just the flow, but could be interpreted correctly.
We did want to bring to the commission's attention fences, and, which currently reads permit a sign shall not be permitted on any fence. Glenn and I both had a recollection of conversations about this, but that no ultimate decision had been reached by the commission as to whether or not we could permit just signs on fences and in what manner. So, we simply wanted to highlight that to you, if you want to address that or...
And, and I had, one note I had that we were going to drop completely, and another note that was different, so I don't know what we're asking really, what was the, do we remember what?
My interpretation was we just struck it out.
Completely?
That was funny, because I have it, I have it crossed.
I had mine crossed out initially, too.
Okay.
Okay, so, can we buy consensus now, right now, strike that? Yes. Okay. Thank you. We will.
To the def, or, in, under the section elevation, we struck the words to improve and substituted that with the phrase solely for the purposes of improving, which the rationale behind that was, if someone was changing their elevation for a reason other than simply raising their sign, if they had some, you know, substantial reason for doing it, we wanted to give them the opportunity to do that, but if their sole purpose for doing it was to try to make their sign taller than everyone else's, then they wouldn't be making sense. Okay? In section 3.5, under the specific limitations, we utilized this section to add in the definitional, definitions that Sean had provided to us in his earlier copy, for electronic message center, pole skirt, and projecting slash flag mount signs, and directional signs. Those are, the points that are in there are verbatim from the material that Sean said earlier, they're just added in here in that location. In section 3.6A, our home occupation signs, we added the word internally to illuminated, so that now it is shall not be internally illuminated. The discussion there being that in a residential area, if someone had a small sign with a little spotlight on it, that would definitely, I mean, that would meet the definition of an illuminated sign, but that, that it wasn't really in keeping with the spirit and intent of our sign ordinance, to not let that happen.
Or that's what we thought, so, it's up to you all to consider that for next time, if that's something that we need to maintain or change.
Additionally, under subsection 3.6B, we added a bullet point that took language from an earlier definition, to say the sign shall not obstruct or interfere with internal or external safe movement of vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Under subsection C, under institutional signs, the first bullet point, we changed it to read that only one ground sign may be displayed per site, and then one wall sign per street frontage on the primary building of the property. Additionally, under that section, we also added another bullet point, that signs shall not obstruct or interfere with internal or external safe movement of vehicular or pedestrian I apologize, there was one earlier addition in the definition section, we did add a definition of the word, of the phrase menu board, so it's now listed under the sign types. Under section 3.8A, also, I should probably add, I added all these, these section titles, the 3.8, 3.6, just for ease of finding stuff, it has no specific purpose other than just making sure that it's for you all.
Well, they will have a purpose.
Yeah, once, once it's in the ordinance, so if you don't like them, you want to call them something else.
Or if we need to reorganize it some, but what we tried to do was reorganize it, so it is a more cohesive. I have the standing ones to go front to my seat, six, six, eight feet, and then all of that sort of signs shall be located, minimum of 10 feet from the right-of-way. Is that struck in this paragraph?
Yes, that is struck. That was struck at the October 10th, I believe.
Yeah.
Or October.
Okay, I, I had the highlight, that's why I was wondering.
Yes, that was struck for institutions.
Yeah, if, if you catch places, as Bruce just did, where, just to make it clear, that we, that we talked about earlier that we changed, if you see that there's discrepancy, bring it to our attention, we can, we think we captured everything that we talked about, but, or we, we're in error.
We, under freestanding, excuse me, first under section 3.8, we added the A, B, C, D, E designations. We also, under freestanding sign, changed the phrasing to the menu board section, to read, a menu board used for motor vehicle drive-through window or for walk-up window service shall be exempt upon review by the Greensburg City Planning Zoning Department for recommendation to the City Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning PAs. That was the, the menu board was something that you all had referenced wanting to discuss further at prior meetings, and we just tweaked that language a little bit, we wanted to bring your attention, however you want that handled.
Why is ground sign, excuse me?
I believe it's a title.
Yeah, I, it, that's one. What our thoughts were there was that the menu boards, we weren't wanting to get into everything and every jot and tittle with those, but we did want to make sure that people provided some information ahead of time, so that if it, if it got to be something that was out of the ordinary, and needed some attention, at least there's an opportunity to review it and bring it to the attention, then we can begin to do that, however we need to do that. But, on hold, all those things, it is, let us know, and it should be okay, without complete control.
Under section B, under the designation sign, we, one just asked me to highlight that we have the current setback is 10 feet off the property line, that's open for much debate as to how much that should be, but wanted to bring to your attention that you will need to determine the setback issues. Same issue under the enclosed shopping center sign, we did change, under the first, the first bullet point, says where a shopping center has an excess, that was originally 1,000 feet, we suggested changing it to 700 feet of frontage, along any state or highway right-of-way, and there would be entitled to one additional designation, designation sign.
What did that change? What, what standard was?
Kind of looked at blocks, one block to the next block, 1,000 feet's a little more than a block, as I recall, and it was, I'm curious, maybe you can add clarification that, we didn't, 1,000 feet was kind of an arbitrary number to begin with.
It was an arbitrary number, but when we looked at blocks, width of being about 300 feet, that if you had two blocks of frontage, that was enough frontage to warrant two.
If they needed or desired it, I mean.
Because you might have two different entrances, if you have that much frontage, and that's typically where the signs are located, that driveway entrance is, so, if you have a bigger center, and Chris and I discussed one up in Hamilton County, that it's probably got half a mile, so a mile of frontage, and it's got several, it's got several big boxes, it's got loads, H, H, office depot.
I hope we don't have any quite that long. Well, I don't mean that in a sense that we don't want development, that would just be an extraordinary thing here, I don't know if it fit in Greensburg. Okay, going on, please.
Having an attention to the wall sign issue, but I'll let Sean bring that up, because it's regressing with the multi-tenant issues. We moved the location of the electronic changeable copy sign into this section as section D, just to try to make it sound a little better.
That's where they'd be more likely to be utilizing, obviously. Again, this language pretty much is consistent with what we've been, and Sean had brought to us and discussed, so, we've talked about this a couple of times, but be sure and look at it again, make sure it is, does say what you thought we were intending to do with this.
On the copy you currently have in section 310, the central business area?
That's page 12, or, no, 17, I'm sorry.
The word blade, under multi-tenant, multi-level building, the word blade, and was struck, and we added the phrase under canopy, just to be a little more descriptive of.
So second bullet point. And we're now looking at adding the word blade back, correct?
Yes. And it'll read, it'll read one blade and/or, and slash or, under canopy sign per street frontage, is that right?
I think we'd say or, so it's one blade, one blade or, one under canopy.
Probably the most significant change that we made throughout this ordinance is to section three eleven, which is signs in the historic downtown district. Essentially, what we did was, under the original, under the proposed sign ordinance draft, we've been utilizing, the guidelines for the Historic Preservation Commission had been moved into the ordinance. We would suggest, or at least open for discussion and bring to your attention, removing the, those guidelines and putting the responsibility for the issues in the historic downtown district back on the Historic Preservation Commission. I did some word smithing to the opening paragraph to basically highlight that the Historic Preservation Commission is the ruling body, and they should be the proper entities to discuss that, based on receiving a certificate of appropriateness from the staff pursuant to the ordinance of the preservationist.
Yeah, and part of the reason for that is, we've got two ordinances governing that, the sign ordinance one and the other, so we've really decapitated them. They were thinking about, when we adopted all those guidelines into the statute, then that becomes, they become hard and fast, as opposed to guidelines, which allows for Historic Preservation Commission to use some judgment about what is historically appropriate or not, without being hard and fast or tied down to very specific details. So my recommendation at least, we go with that, with that now. Whether or not the wording in here that was written in this paragraph is exactly right, that has to be determined. I want you to take a look at that, but I also want you to consider what we've done. If you're unhappy with that, or you don't think that's appropriate, then we need to, you need to bring it to our attention pretty quickly, so that we have some time to work on between now and the next meeting. Okay?
On section three point twelve, interstate interchange signs. We struck the sentence that says, the sign shall be located in the rear yard with the base behind the actual structure of the principal building, for lots without a rear yard, i.e. that has both interstate and access road to or road frontage. An interstate sign must have board zoning appeals included. We changed there is to read, the interstate sign shall be located within 2,500 feet of the center point of the interchange, and shall be permitted, shall be permitted in an interstate-oriented sign in addition to any other freestanding sign that is permitted. Interstate interchange signs are subject to final review by the Plan Commission following recommendation by the department. So that was just some, some language changes to try and highlight that it's approved here first.
As part of the change to section.
Not as various. And then section three point thirteen became, we added the, a section for billboard or off-premise signs, basically providing that off-premise signs are prohibited unless specifically approved by the Plan Commission following specific application. And we also added temporary off-premise signs may be displayed for a community event upon receipt of a proper permit from the Greensburg Planning slash Zoning Department. Such signs, such signs shall not exceed 32 square feet in size, and may be located off-premise from the event location not more than 30 days prior to said event. And then we added the sentence, billboards will be permitted when authorized by the Plan Commission on a case-by-case basis following recommendation by the Greensburg Planning slash Zoning Department.
Those are some significant, significant in one sense, because they're changes, so bring it to your attention again. Feedback, if there's any immediate thoughts?
Can I back up a little bit here? On the, one on the interstate signs, on that final sentence, should we put recommendations by the department? Should specify what department?
Yeah, we used the phrase Planning, Greensburg Planning and Zoning Department throughout.
Yeah, well, actually, there's, I can add that.
Just add that, thank you, John.
Anything else, anyone else? Chris?
We added, we made significant changes to the section on portable signs, temporary signs. We changed it from portable freestanding signs to, this is section three point one six. We changed it to portable and temporary signs. Provided that portable and temporary signs are allowed in the business, industrial, and industrial zoning district. Each business may be permitted 90 days of temporary or portable signage per calendar year, subject to several provisions. We struck G, H, and I, which had originally provided for, unless otherwise specified by the applicant, the temporary sign permit shall expire 15 days from the date of issuance. And then various provisions related to when these signs permanently be issued and when it will stop. What we did is change section G to just say that an applicant must specify a consecutive sign period within, with specific commencement and termination dates. With the idea being that if someone comes in with an application knowing exactly when it would end and when it would start, and when it would end, then you know how much time they've used, and you can keep track of that.
Okay, this was in the original draft, we kept, we maintained that, except we've made some changes in, less paperwork, basically, and less, try to keep it simpler. The 90 days, again, as a placeholder, you know, if there, if a better number is a better number, then that's something for discussion here. But please give that some thought. What this, what this is trying to do is keep down a plethora of just signs up here and there, everywhere. Business has got a sign that they want to use, they've got to make it a permanent sign, or, and if they've got a sign that they've got a message board on, or can put letters on and change their messages from time to time, it's a permanent sign, then that's perfectly fine. They can change their message every day if they wish, so, but that's something I want to call to your attention, I want us to make an affirmative decision about, not necessarily tonight, but next month. Yes, John?
Okay, on the, it says the 90-day temporary, one per calendar year, can they do two forty-five, or?
Yeah, they do two forty-five.
So it's a maximum of 90 days.
All right, or six fifteens, or, or nine tens, or everybody want to, really want to do it.
I was saying that they have the spring sale and the fall sale.
Yeah, yeah, right. It really is truly designed to be a temporary thing, that really calls attention to something extraordinary outside of what there's, regular signage cannot handle.
But other than adding the appendix, that's.
Okay, so adding, we were talking about, we will have to add the appendix, so before I get to Shaun, gentlemen, are there questions or comments, clarifications now that you want to ask about?
Both Kevin and I questioned the two weeks on the political campaign signs. We're thinking shorter.
Okay.
I don't have that exact thing in mind. I mean, I'd like to see them all gone the next morning, okay?
Well, that's a little bit unrealistic.
I understand that, I'm not, but, but I think two weeks is a little long.
Well, suggest a time. Ten days, one week?
Seven days, one week, a week. To give emphasis to get out there and get them.
True. Two weeks can stretch into three pretty easy, I understand. Other thoughts? I don't, there's no hard and fast rule in this, I mean, it's, it really comes down to a, you know, for, for me, when I've been involved with it, I've got them down within a day or two, a couple days at the most. But that's been because I'm a little more cautious about things than some others.
I'm like you, I always, I've run in for office before, and I've always tried to have everyone who backed out that night after the election.
Depending on how many signs, depending on how many signs you have, that's possible. I think a week's reasonable, or 10 days is reasonable, but I. Okay, well, we know by consensus, that's, everybody okay with that? So we're going to make it down to one week? Okay, anything else? Blake or Tom? Well, we'll get you another copy for the web. It's printed, I printed, I looked at, when I looked at this first time on my iPad, it came up that way. When I printed it out from my computer, the office, I got this kind of a copy, so it's, I think it's more a matter of formatting.
Yeah, it would depend on what, what you're using to open it. It was drafted in Word, in Microsoft Word, and saved in a Word format, and so it's a docx.
We'll get you the right thing, Blake.
If you need me to, I can, I can change to a different format.
John or Bruce, do you have anything further?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Green, you've got five minutes. Shaun has been very helpful in his process, by the way, as you all are aware, but he's given a lot of time and energy to it. So why don't you come on up here to the, to the roster? And just those things that are really burning you, that have to be in front of you.
Well, overall, it's, you know, it's been very positive, and it's, you know, I feel it's turned out to be very good for the city and also business people. So I think everybody's worked together well in it, and I've tried to keep my passion out of it too in some of the earlier days. My apologies for being so passionate, and thank you for still saying hi. But architectural signs, we went over that, architectural blade. The one thing I'd recommend is adding a rule of thumb on square footage on that, if it's not already listed. I did not see it, but I could have overlooked it. I would recommend, and this is based on walking around, you see a lot of these signs, basically, under canopies, at locations like Staples and other businesses are, and also downtown Greensburg. Six square foot is sufficient, because it's basically for walk-by signs, you don't need anything huge, but I'd also recommend a seven-foot clearance, just for safety. Still on page one, went over, did you decide to keep the word illustrations on there, Chris?
Under copy, I know some of that was revised.
Illustrations is there, yes.
Yes. But it's just worded as illustrations form an advertisement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Illustrations are patterns that form an advertisement.
Okay. Page four. On the definition of sign, the second to last line, for the purpose of removal, signs shall also include all sign structures. I believe we've talked about that with the attorney, about legalities of a structure itself. I'd be getting into legality thing versus a sign face to be removed. I would recommend scratching that, the word shall also include sign structure, I'd recommend striking that, or it's probably going to be illegal that for the city.
Okay, we'll check into that, thank you. Definition sign B, section B, A-frame, I'd suggest rules on square footage on that as well, unless I overlook that definition. I'd suggest eight square feet, five foot max height. Basically, an A-frame sign you will see downtown, and also out at shopping pauses where they'll sit out a temporary sign that they pick up and take in every day. If you want to go one step further, you could even recommend that that sign be taken in after business hours, so it doesn't become clutter or a long wait in order.
Is it eight square feet and four feet high?
Five feet.
Max?
Yes. Page five. S, individual letters and individual mounted letters, mention the word ground sign, I'd also add the word pole sign after, since we acted in the definitions, two locations that I'd recommend that be added.
I'm sorry, what do you ask?
Under S, under, on page five, individual letter, directly to a building or ground sign, he says add the word also pole sign, or ground or pole sign, right, ground sign, pole sign.
And back on the top of the page, letter H, designation, we're seeing that as the same as a multi-tenant sign, aren't we?
I think it's not necessarily advertising a sign for any tenant there, but it's, it's like maybe naming center. You know, you have shopping centers, like Cassington Square Hall, that's a Cassington sign, but then it's also got signs of individual tenants in there. The designation sign was more to designate the destination versus the residence. The thinking.
All right. Should we add the definition multi-tenant sign? We don't have it, I guess, do we? Maybe we need to. We do talk about it on, under our signage area of multi-tenants. We've got multi-tenant level building.
I don't, I'm not sure, if a sign is, if we have a sign that has multi-tenants on it, but it's within the configuration of the size or even inappropriate otherwise, does it make any difference? That there's two or three multi-tenants on it, or just one, or they're saying three different things, advertising three different things?
I think it's all within the allowable area.
That, that would be my response, Shaun.
Okay.
I'm not sure, we need to kind of.
All right. Typically, they allow the multi-tenant signs to be a larger square footage, and that's on our chart. It's separated out as a larger square footage.
Okay.
And if it is included, I'd recommend, we briefly talked about this, but I'd recommend if it's a multi-tenant sign, five tenant panels or less.
if it's a multi-tenant sign, five tenant panels or less. And the biggest reason why is so, it's actually helping businesses out for us having clutter. You see a lot of multi-tenant signs, for example, our main source is the old Walmart, there's more tenants on there than anybody ever, we drive down the road, in my mind, it looks like clutter more than it helps out.
Okay. If we have it on the chart, then we probably ought to define it. And will you send something to me and to Chris on that?
Yeah.
And to Gary?
Sure.
Then we can take a look at incorporating or not, how everyone knew that. Okay? Thank you. Next.
Page six. I noticed on some of the definitions, like CC projecting, it mentions on the last line, the area of double-face projecting signs are calculated on one face of the sign only. I notice it's on some things, and it's on, it's not on the others, I mean, 90% of the ordinances that we read, it's kind of known that it's per side, it's what you're seeking. So just a technical thing, I don't know if we'll add it to all of them, or just delete it.
Okay. Page 10. Glenn, you brought this up again, about indoor commercial messages, and from my notes, I thought we were going to strike that for, for legal reasons, and I think somebody mentioned looking inside and seeing some ice TV and being able to see it, you know, getting into other legal battles. I'd recommend seeing the way from it, too, but that's my two cents.
That's kind of what I had, but we wanted to make sure that's what it was.